The other five conditions in physical attendance, Donna?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wow.
How'd you get the call on?
Did you get the confirmation from?
Yes.
How are things in your neck of the woods?
Um. We just kind of found the traffic congestion.
Yeah, I saw that.
Radar board out there.
I saw that.
And we thought about 25 hours of volunteers, neighbors chopping things down and whacking back stuff for a little while. Wow. Now I'm trying to figure out.
They're trying to, I can get that number driving down there. I had to get back to you. You know, you can do 50 or 20.
It is amazing how.
Davy, can you hear us there?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, all good. No, they.
They're just a little informed. I mean, they just, I think they're like evidence. So, um, and we can have it until they start moving it around for summer. And then we're gonna, the sheriff's office.
And then I unmuted another person that had their hand up.
And.
Hello?
Hi, Mary. I'm gonna put you back on mute. If that's okay.
Are you doing public comment?
Not quite yet.
Hi, Ben.
Hi, Val.
I'm trying, oh, there we go. I'm trying to get my video on. Sorry, I'm late. Couldn't, couldn't get into the meeting ID. All right, let me go back. I need to get back to my. Uh, let me see here. Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order, Ben. Sorry, I'm late. Oh, sorry, are you serious? Did I lose it? Oh, there you guys are.
We got you.
Okay, sorry, I'm going back and forth trying to get back to my agenda here. Okay. Individual comments this evening to three minutes and it's star six to mute and unmute. And anyone that's finding on Zoom, it's star nine, raise your hand and Ben will call on you. If you make a comment, it would be really helpful for our minute taker Johanna to have you say your name first as she's taking the minutes. Since half of us are in person and half of us are on a Zoom call. So I'll move into the public comment period. That's if there's anything not located on the agenda that anyone would like to bring up. Now's a good time to do that. Anybody?
Mary had her hand up before and so I'll allow her, there she is. This is Mary Rapar.
Hi.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, hi, Val. Thank you very much. Mary Rapar from Home Valley. I sent you all a, a letter. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it. I've been giving this a lot of thought on continuing our long dramatic discussion, Valerie.
Yes.
And, uh, so I'd like to have that entered into the record. I would also like to add another, um, thing that I learned about after I, afterwards from a friend of mine who apparently lived in Portland. There is an organization called REACH and it's, um, it's R E A C H. Uh, cdc.org is the, um, is the, uh, web address. And I have not had a chance to read their entire, in its entirety, but it is an organization that purchases homes. And it's a nonprofit and they purchase homes for affordable housing, for real affordable housing. Um, we're never going to build enough affordable housing for, for our rising population. So I think we're going to have to think differently. I make mention in my memo about certain, uh, things that I see as necessary. We're going to have to have a hard discussion among ourselves where we want our society to go and if we want people to, um, be homeowners in our society. Or a bunch of renters forever and ever and ever. So this REACH organization, I think, may be something to, uh, add to the discussions about affordable housing. Affordable housing, from what I have read, means a person uses one-third of their salary to pay the rent. Not half, not 75%, but one-third. And, uh, we're never going to achieve affordable housing in Stevenson unless we start, uh, talking about this in, in a more serious manner. In the sense that what can we do to alleviate this, uh, situation by, uh, policy changes and legislative changes in our community? Thank you very much. Um, please, uh, feed us REACH program and maybe have it for a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. As always, your comments are much appreciated. All right, anybody else with their hand up there, Ben?
Nobody on the screen and it hasn't looked like anybody in person either.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to the meeting minutes for March and April. Uh, make sure everybody's had a chance to have a look at those. There are any, why don't we just start with March and see if anybody has any comments or any additions or changes to the March meeting minutes?
And there are two from March's special meeting.
Okay.
Valerie, this is Mike. I'd say the meeting, the minutes are, hi, the meeting minutes are fairly substantial, but I do not see any changes needed in any of the three meeting minutes that we would be approving tonight.
Okay. Oh, so wait, so am I missing one, Ben? I said the March, April. What am I missing?
Two, two from March. Oh, sorry.
The two from March. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
So.
So Mike, are you making a motion to approve the March 8th?
I will.
March 15th? And the April 12th minutes?
Well, with my comments, uh, yes, I would make a motion to approve the March 8th. March 15th. And April. Jeff just mentioned it, April.
12.
12 should be right.
Well, minutes as presented.
All right.
I'll second that.
Well, I have two to second. Who wants to arm wrestle for that privilege?
I think Davy was first.
All right, Davy, you good with that?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I.
Hi. All right, and any opposed? All right, looks like the motion passes for all three sets of minutes. Thank you very much. All right, um, looks like new business there, Ben. I don't see anything under new business. Unless something come up the past couple of hours.
None.
All right. So let's, um, move on to old business. Continuing discussion of the zoning amendments. Um, it looks like we're going to discuss reestablishing public involvement expectations, which I think is an excellent idea. Ben, do you wanna? Let us know what you had in mind with, with that idea?
Yeah, really not a lot of preamble here. The, the staff report goes into what you had requested, um, before going into this topic. And, and what we were able to do, um, we did establish that in August of 2020. And we were all still figuring out what COVID meant. And so there was some thought about doing, um, an outdoor meeting in a pavilion. Uh, maybe that would be possible, um, to do more than 10 people there. And it wasn't even for outdoor as a gathering, um, would be more than 10. So, uh, we relied heavily on, um, the digital format. We had, uh, digital and, and direct mailing format. So there's nine, eight different, um, general types of public engagements, opportunities that we laid out. Project website, community questionnaires, city council and planning commission liaisons for the two zones. Direct mailings to property owners, stakeholder interviews, uh, Facebook postings, all the workshops that you guys have been doing as a planning commission. And then, um, the city council public hearing, which we'll have to do, uh, if there's a recommendation from the planning commission, uh, for any sort of change. And, and that we've done for the previous two changes, uh, talked about with this topic. So that's all summarized there. The results of that, um, for the last topics did result in changes. So everything that has been presented is always in discussion draft form. And, and the engagement that we get, um, is taken into account. So, um, those resulted in changes. Still, a lot of those amendments were proposed, um, in areas where there were already zoned R3 or C1 commercials. So there's some expectation that, that more activity there, um, is likely. Where now, uh, the topic is about, uh, expanding those R3 areas or allowing more in the R2 areas. So, um, you guys are all hearing, uh, the need to expand the public engagement. And so that's what you asked me to do after the last meeting is, um, present something for you guys. So yeah, just two, um, discussion points, uh, for you, uh, on that. So the first, first one, I, I really think that you should do. Uh, and then the second one is kind of something I hope you, you'll discuss and talk about to see if that's necessary too, but it's a possibility. So the first one, uh, would be an open house that we could hold at the Hegelold Center. With this, what I'm envisioning is having, uh, 20 minutes or 30 minutes, um, introduction by staff to give the, the what or the why. Uh, description that was asked for at the last meeting. And then to set the stage for some just breakout exercises where we can have easels, um, set up around and, um, comment cards at those easels. So, uh, they would have different topics and I, I would like, if we go this route, I'd like to kind of flesh out what those topics are either, um, with you all as a group or with Jeff as your representative there. So some of them could be where should, um, new housing be built? So having that as a map-based exercise, another one, uh, having like a dot exercise where you're doing preference on, uh, the type of housing that you want to see. Or the, the type of, uh, streetscape, you know, look here and not up there, the type of streetscape, um, that's, uh, people prefer. And then we can take that information and use it to generate, um, some different policies, uh, that have been, or different regulations that have been presented in the past. Or, um, let them underscore parts of those regulations that, that were proposed. And then the second concept would be to have a follow-up meeting where we're presenting, uh, what we heard to say, we heard you. This is, um, this is how we're interpreting that as far as a zoning pro-change goes. And just having that be more of a listening session about, um, about the change or town hall, about, um, what we heard, uh, before anything goes any farther toward recommendations. So those are the two, two concepts. I don't know if that satisfies the need, um, that we're hearing for additional public inputs. Or, um, if that goes too far, but that's the, what I've got for you guys to talk about. Just kind of what is the next step? And we're all just at full stop on, on all the, uh, policies. At this point.
Thanks, Ben. I, I actually, I'll start this time. I always make everybody else go first. So maybe I should go first every now and then. I think that's a great idea. I, I like the idea of having an open house. And, you know, some of the comments we heard the last time where people were having a hard time understanding maps, and I'm talking specifically about the R3 rezone. But just having maps there, having a lot of information, having people have an opportunity to speak with us enjoyer collectively and give their opinion in writing. And then, uh, I love the idea where we can take all those concepts and maybe come back two weeks later or a month later to planning commission meeting and present the findings of what we found out. I, I really like that concept. Um, and I really appreciate you bringing it up. And I, like I said, I think it's a, it's a great idea. So, um, Davy, I'll throw you under the bus first. What do you think about that?
I was actually gonna raise my hand because, uh, I, I agree with you. I actually like these things. Because it, it allows, you know, a two-way information, how, I mean, people may not be aware of a lot of the things that we're discussing. So we're able to bring that across and they're able to give input back. And then you follow up two weeks later after they thought about it. And, you know, they're able to give you a cogent explanation why they approve of it or not approve of it. So yeah, I'm all in for this idea. My only concern is, of course, is the Hegelold, uh, setup for COVID.
How would that work, Ben? If we, you know, did especially something that's, what you're describing is more hands-on. Um, and people might be moving from kind of table to table, you know, with different concepts. Trying to, are we going to be able to facilitate that well?
I think that we can. As far as, um, COVID, the bigger the space, the more people you can have in it since it's percentage of occupancy. So, uh, using, using that, um, I think would help us have the people. An alternative would be, um, not to have sort of a staff preamble and just have it as an open house where people can show up at any time between, uh, X hour and Y hour. It doesn't allow us to, to answer that why question as well. But, um, there are, there are possibilities there.
Okay, thank you. I don't know who, uh, Jeff, Mike, August, whoever wants to jump in.
This is Jeff. I'd be happy to, to jump in. I, I think Ben, the, the core of what you've got here, you know, looks, looks pretty good. I mean, there are logistics, I think, to this. And, and I think, I think it needs to be not just a casual come-in, open house for a conversation. I think there needs to be some facilitation there. And my first thought is before we, before we have the staff preamble or as part of this, I think one of the key questions I have for the folks that come, would come to this is, what do they want to see in their neighborhoods? I mean, what's their image of, of what they like and what they want to see in their neighborhoods? I think, I think it is good to, to be, to clearly state why we started down this path of looking, uh, you know, at, uh, this rezone. And I think there's, there's a variety of reasons, I think, that have circulated out there. One is, uh, you know, affordable housing. You know, two has been, uh, extension of, of infrastructure. We've talked about extension of sewer and water and how that plays. We've had discussion of traffic. Uh, I mean, that's, it's a, there are a number of drivers. And, and then just certain general housekeeping and cleanup. I mean, we've seen these over the years. I think the zoning ordinance has been modified and, you know, there are some inconsistencies between some of the zoning designations that are out there. For example, we find density inconsistencies between R2 and R1. And these weird little peninsulas and pockets that when we look at land uses and topography, they just don't seem to make any sense. So there's a variety of reasons as to why we, we went down this, but I'm really interested to hearing what, what people want to see in their neighborhoods and in this town. And, and I think that's, that could almost be a workshop in itself, uh, quite frankly. But, you know, that's, I, I think this is the start, but I, I'd also like us to sort of, I know we want to move ahead in, in terms of our deliberations on this rezon, but I'd like to see us take a broader perspective. I'd like to see, uh, perhaps a joint planning commission, city council endeavor out there in order to, to talk to the people of the city and say, hey, how do you want to engage with us as we're making these types of decisions? I mean, it would certainly help us, I think, as a planning commission to know how we could better engage, with the community out there and, and simply asking them, you know, how, how could we better, you know, get your input, uh, as we're doing that? I think would serve the planning or the city council well too, is, is they're looking at what's in their bill with like rate increases, et cetera. So I mean, what, what sort of a, a program could we put together? It really sort of spans, spans city in terms of how we relate to the citizens, uh, in town. That's, that's a bit broader than what you've laid out here, but I, I think in the long term, uh, you know, like at least from my experience, you know, it takes, it takes some time and I think we'd have to figure out how to do it and what resources are needed. But the more of that public input we have, I think, uh, just the better the, our proposals are going to be crafted and, uh, and they're going to be supported. I will give the citizens that ownership of what we're trying to do. So those are my, my thoughts. I know there's a lot there and I'm, I'm happy to work with you.
Thank you, Jeff. Well said. Appreciate it. Mike or August, any comments?
Valerie, this is Mike. I can go after Jeff. I'd like to thank Jeff for that thoughtful and insightful, um, process. I think those are valuable ideas. I think we should look at an expanded public involvement process that may take longer than even just what is described here. I think good steps would be to start with some meetings, some open houses that are proposed and then expand them. I do want to thank Ben and city staff for the efforts they have made to date with doing community outreach during this pandemic. Because when you look at the metrics that are presented in the, uh, agenda or the package for tonight, there has been a lot of outreach, a lot of varied outreach during the pandemic. That I think, uh, can't be overstated how, it appears that it was effective. You garnered a lot of responses. You've got a lot of people involved. We've got people here tonight who have responded to the concerns in the community about these proposed changes. But to add on to some of what Jeff said, I don't feel that it's just the citizens in the neighborhood that are the stakeholders here. We have persons like Mary Rapar who don't live in the community, who have a, uh, maybe difficult to find, uh, housing, people that would like to purchase property in Stevenson that can't find property that meets their budget. I know that increasingly people are looking to develop additional dwelling units on parcels to be able to afford a buy-in on a property, to buy a house, to think about adding additional housing. I think stakeholders are the workforce, the people that work in the community that may not be able to find housing here. The business owners that they may have a hard time hiring staff because of the difficulty finding housing near where they work. So I don't feel it's just the residents in those neighborhoods, but I think the stakeholder group is a much larger group. I don't know if we'd be able to effectively capture sufficient responses from that greater groups of stakeholders. But I think an open house and additional meetings would be one way to help perhaps draw some of their comments into the discussion. Ben, I just want to ask, is there a set timeline that we're trying to meet here? Are we forecasting to a set date or is this kind of an open-ended thing that we could mull about for six months or a year? mull about for six months or a year or even? Heaven forbid it takes a year to get to some recommendation, but where are we at with?
There's no, nothing needs to drive your timelines. Policies need to be set based on the, the community's decision. So nothing needs to drive those decisions. There are grants. We are working on an extension of one of those now and until later in the year. If we pass that deadline without getting those grant funds, that's fine. We didn't get those grant funds. So if it takes longer to, to get people to a point where they're comfortable making decisions on this, it can take as long as it takes to go.
Well, in that case, I think a good start would be to have some variation on an open house down at the Hegel wall center and seeing what more we can do after that. So I got Valerie.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. August?
Yeah, just kind of echo every, you know, everyone's input. Sounds like good ideas, definitely involve in the community, you know, is, is essential. They have to feel that they're stakeholders and involved in the decision-making process and, and have, you know, that their voices are actually heard, not just, yeah, we read your email and we, you know, are going on. I think that kind of is the feeling that some of them have is that, you know, you're not really listening. So I think that, that public involvement aspect is, is really important going forward.
Great. Thank you, August. So now I just want to open it up for just public comments. Anybody that's on the Zoom meeting or there with you, Ben, if they just want to make some brief comments? And if they do, that's fine, but please just state your name first for a minute taker.
It's one, one hand in person here. Rick?
Okay, great.
Hi, this is Rick May. I've done a relatively deep dive in here to try to look at affordable housing. I had quite an interesting conversation with the author of the Johnson economic report and talking to some builders, you know, that have comments from affordable housing is difficult to affordable housing is a unicorn. Basically, talking to the author of the Johnson report, talked about really you have two different kinds of factors that are involved in affordable housing. You have affordable housing, for instance, the people that work at Scaminia Lodge, they have a hard time keeping their people up there because they can't keep their people housed locally. There's not enough apartments to be able to, to service them locally. So Scaminia Lodge has a problem with that. And then you have the affordable housing issue of the people with an average income. You know, they're priced out of the market to be able to do it. Those are two completely separate issues. One has to do with apartments, one has to do with how does, how does the young family with an average income get their foot into the door? One of the things that the, that the, and I can't remember the name of the author, I'm sorry, of the Johnson report said is, is that, you know, for how, I go, well, how do you create affordable housing? He says apartments are so expensive, you have to downsize the apartments as much as possible. He says, I suggest you do walk-up apartments in the downtown area. You get a hold of Scaminia Lodge and you look into the possibility of doing an enterprise zone. In other words, you just, you have to take a synergy of all the factors that you have that are available to try to create this. Unfortunately, just doing a zoning change isn't going to miraculously do anything. That's, that's kind of the consensus with talking to the builders and talking to the economic report. Because it really takes a concerted effort all the way along the chain to put all the resources together to be able to do it. And it's going to be, it's going to be a tough call to be able to do it. But you just go say, okay, we're just going to make a whole bunch more R2 and that's going to solve the problem. It probably won't. One thing that I can suggest from talking at this and looking at the recommendations that came out of the 2020 Scaminia County Housing Needs Assessment is one of the things that, that I would like to see is as if we have these people that are working and obviously you need to put some units maybe in the downtown core area. But also if you can do what the request was here, one of the things for the recommendations with Stevenson is increase the number of allowable ADAs from one to one attach and one detach. That helps the, the homeowner because they could be able to create more income. If they create, you know, an eight, nine hundred square foot affordable building or housing, that means that somebody working as Scaminia Lodge can come and, and basically been a part of our community. What my concern is, is though I think that it's a good idea to maybe build a walk-up down in downtown. I think it's also good to say, how can we spread these people out in our community? Because I think when we rub elbows with people at different social and economic classes, I think it's good for everybody to be able to do. And I'm just suggesting that we take or take our blinders off and look at, at a larger picture of this. And I can just tell you, the people that wrote these reports, they are dying to tell you what they discovered. And then, and I think public reach is really good, but I think going to the author of like the Johnson report and going, how would you solve this particular problem with somebody that's just done a deep dive into the numbers may be a very good idea.
Thank you, Rick. And I also want to thank you for bringing these reports up at the last planning commission meeting. Ben was kind enough to make me copies and I have those now. So I really appreciate that and your comments. Thank you. Anyone else there in the audience or on the Zoom call that wants to add any comments to this?
Phil Crawford is here and then we'll move to Zoom.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, Phil Crawford. Sort of springing off of some things Jeff said. I really like the idea of a more comprehensive city look at public involvement. I, I'd say public engagement might be better. Some things that I think are needed there. It needs to be owned by the city. It needs to be part of city government, not generated from the outside. The city needs to turn it around and get its citizen-centric, not government-centric. I think that changes the way you look at things completely. A program like this needs to be continuous. It needs to be there all the time so that commissioners and counselors could go to that public and get information when they need it. Not, it's not issue oriented, it's there all the time. Theoretically, it's there now with representative government, but I don't know anybody who's satisfied that that's actually working and it certainly isn't working for the issues that we've been talking about. I, I think it's really important to identify stakeholders. And I think Mike made that point very well. We have to work hard to go find some of those stakeholders. They aren't easy to get engaged. It can be done and it ought to be part of the program. The renters, low income, high income, everybody. It's worked really well with, I think, business and development interest so far in some of the things the city's done. But the rest have not been part of that process. So those are just a couple of thoughts. I also keep wondering, I was pretty impressed with the stuff that Ben sent out and all the things that have been done. I guess he's done most of it. And then it occurred to me, so, okay, how's that working? Is that getting us what we need? That's a lot of work to put into something if it doesn't do what we want it to do. And my sense from talking to people out in the neighborhood is that it's not enough or it's not the right thing. We have to craft what that right thing is. And some of us have been working on that and we have some ideas. But at this point, I'd say it involves all the city government. It's not that, it's the planning commission. You guys are getting the heavy lifting on a lot of this stuff. And that's not where, that's part of it. But I think the council really needs to get engaged in this if it's going to work. So I look forward to more. And I think the idea of a community gathering is a good place maybe to think about some of these things. Maybe that ought to be one of the topics that people address there and what, what do they think would work? I don't know.
Great. Thank you so much for your comments. Much appreciated.
Can you talk more about that last point? Just how would that be a topic? How, how would that be a topic?
Well, I don't know. I was just thinking if we, if we somehow could get relatively large and representative group of stakeholders together, which is, is a task in itself, but let's suppose we had some things to suggest as possibilities. How would people like to participate in these kinds of things in the future? I don't, I don't know. One, one possibility is some kind of, of neighborhood process. There, there are more extensive ways to go, but they tend to get issue oriented. You know, you bring somebody in and you, you have focus groups and you go through a process of engagement, but that's pretty intense and pretty issue oriented usually. And I, I don't, that's not what I'm suggesting. I think we need something that's, it's fundable, it's functional and it's, there's so much power in the community that we don't take advantage of. There's a lot of power right here and just the few people who are in this room. If the city can figure out a way to get that power to come to them and help organize others, bring ideas, but there's all the rest of the community out there. If we can harness that, I think we can, we can make these things go a lot smoother. And I, I think times are different. People have said, well, the comprehensive plan sort of took care of a lot of this. People spoke, we, they reflected what they want and so on and so forth. Well, that was quite a few years ago and this is not the same place it was then. The forces have really changed. So it may call for a different way of, of going about it. I'm not really sure, Ben. I think that's a good question. It might be a simple thing of just asking people how they want to participate. What I'm finding is that unless people see a problem, they don't see a need for a bunch of solutions. And until they see the problem, somebody clarifies the problem, they don't hear us. They don't hear anybody. And that's kind of what this zoning thing has turned out to be. Well, I got this information about zoning changes, but what's the problem that it's solving? I don't have a problem. You, you have created a problem for me by doing this, which may, makes it even worse. You're the bad guys because you did it. Well, that's not the way it ought to work. This thing needs to start from the beginning, not when the, the decision gets made or is about to be made. So I don't know how we present that to the public, but that's a challenge that maybe, maybe an opportunity, I don't know.
Tracy Grotto.
Thank you. Okay.
Your name, ma'am?
Tracy Grotto. And I also agree, Ben, you have done a tremendous amount of work. And I think part of what our observation has been, just because we called our neighborhood meeting and people showed up very excited, was that it's the community not being organized or having a structure to gather and discuss regardless of, you know, what a, a particular topic is sort of that missing piece. And so I'm not here to say, I want you to do this thing and I want you to ask these questions and what have you. I actually, to, to Phil's comment is if you guys can harness some of the energy on this in the neighborhoods, I think we could be doing some things differently. And again, if I just have the offer out there that I'm happy to help think through what an open house could look like, looking at materials, creative ways of engagement, et cetera, et cetera. So again, it's, it's here to make the offer of participation as well. Thank you.
Touch more on that about creative ways of engagement. So if we leave here making a decision that we're going to have a workshop and that's going to be our public involvement strategy? And then we don't do a creative engagement elsewhere, you know, do we need to add that to the planning commission and you make a decision to?
Right.
Do these other things? So what is, what is creative engagement mean to you?
Well, frankly, I mean, I could drop flyers off and door not to 25 houses. I could make that offer and I might be able to ask four more people to do the same thing. And I think having sort of activated people in the community, including the planning commissioners, can you guys make five phone calls to your neighbors and ask them to make five phone calls? I mean, part of it is just like a social networking strategy. And I think also, you know, we have our typical, you know, Facebook and all those sorts of things. But we enlist our business members to also, you know, it's, it's that verbal engagement that I think is so critical to get people to care. If I would have just sent out an email, people may not have come to our meeting, but people knew me. And so they knew that when I said, I think this is important, I think you should come, they did. And so who are leaders that are not just government or just the councils that, but that have trust in you all, that if you asked for businesses to invite people because it was important and their voices needed? I think we also have nonprofits that can be tapped and engaged to get, you know, sort of their client engagement even, or some of their board members. I could, can't kind of keep going on and on and on, but like I said, I'm happy to, you know, tap offline if, if there's any more interest.
I am very happy to, too. I don't want to be the person making the decisions for everyone else offline.
Yeah.
So it's just.
To capture it here. Yeah, now I got it. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else with comments, Ben?
None here. I'll start on Zoom. Two, two hands up on Zoom. Well, one hand up now. Oh, two hands up.
All right. Just state, whoever speaks first, just state your name, please, for a minute taker.
Mary, that's you. No, we're gonna allow Brian McNamara to talk.
I think I just unmuted. Is that possible? Thank you for the nodding heads. Okay. Apologies. So a very thoughtful discussion tonight. I really appreciate that. Many of the points that have been made were raised during the contentious fight over the moratorium, moratorium on single-family dwellings years or some time ago. And yes, a lot of the things that Ben has done, whether it be involving stakeholders, sending out letters, all those things that have raised the ire of those to be affected, felt, you know, it didn't come until the moment before this thing that had been going on for a year was about to go permanent. And so that helped galvanize the property owners, stakeholders. And there was a huge amount of comment. And in fact, you know, I feel like we reached a better solution than the one at hand. And we're still struggling with that battle over the desire for increased density, limited space, affordable housing, which, you know, that's, that's a real catchy word and phrase. And, you know, there's a lot about that that really needs some serious discussion as was brought up. And since I feel that there will be that, I'm not going to go into the affordable housing situation right now. So all I was going to say is that part of getting the public involved, what I really noticed is tonight we had three meetings worth of minutes read out. That came out at what, this afternoon, one o'clock today? And until I got that last packet, I had no idea about all the public comments, some of which came from people that were invested in the last, in the issue over the moratorium. So I would like to see these minutes come out in a more timely manner than a month after. So I would like to see these minutes come out in a more timely manner than a month after or more after the meetings. And currently, just looking on the website, the planning commission doesn't even post the minutes in in after the fact, which I believe they once did. And this is also a problem with the city council meeting where if you don't have activated people like us sitting here, these things can be printed out, put into the Pioneer. And so people can actually see after the fact what was discussed and say, yes, that's a direction to go rather than just being faced with it. So that is the upshot. I appreciate all the 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 interest in engagement. And I also would like to make the suggestion that the minutes of the meetings be posted more publicly and more promptly. And I thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And I would agree with that. I know Ben has been trying very hard, you know, to get the packet, especially especially if there's a lot with our agenda to get it out by about noon on Friday. Because obviously, it's, you know, a problem if it's, you know, the the day of the meeting, not only for the commissioners, but the public as well. So I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, Valerie, let me chip in there. I I just wanted to thank Brian for his comments. I would agree. The access to previous meetings, both in the city council and the planning in some form, if it's just the audio from it or something, because there is a lot of detail that isn't transferred in the minutes that probably would clarify a lot of stuff that are people's concerns that we kind of see repetitively showing up, not that, you know, that diminishes that desire for an answer. But I think it gives them a better ability to gauge where we're at in our discussion and that they understand, you know, we really are looking at all these different elements. And so I think if there's some way that the city could put that on on the website, either, you know, in audio form or in full video form, audio would probably be sufficient. That would be my suggestion and add-on to Brian's comments.
Thanks, August. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if there's even a combination, especially for recording these, that they're just available. But I do like the idea of having the printed minutes, you know, some people are auditory, some are visual. You know, I still like to print paper, so it's easier for me to digest it that way. So again, thanks for everyone for the comments. Do we have anyone else with their hand up, Ben, on the Zoom call?
We do.
Okay.
Two people. There we go.
Hello, this is Julie May. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I definitely like the idea of having the audio available. I'm sure there's more people than just me that have scheduling conflicts for the Monday night meetings. So I'd appreciate that. I definitely think that it it sounds like, you know, we've had a number of people make some suggestions. And my request would be to allow some time for a number of us to put together our ideas, our thoughts, any input that we might have about particular stakeholders or how we might better accomplish the outreach, to actually coalesce our ideas and email that to the planning commission and we can loop in, then even the city council for that matter. And in that, hopefully, people can also make some comments about maybe any specific interest that they have in additional information or work groups and whatnot to to focus in on things they're very much interested in, like affordable housing. Ben, you spoke about like maybe some design standards or, you know, how do you want things to look? Even concerns about density, that 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 kind of thing. But in particular, I just feel like right now, I would appreciate all of us being able to just have some time to put together these thoughts and input and somehow get it on record, you know, email it to you folks back so that not only is it just in this conversation that we're having today, but it's it's something that's trackable. And then maybe we've just had a little bit more time from this conversation to coalesce. Okay, I really think this is a good idea, or I've seen this done in this other area and put together some of those creative ideas so that you can run with it.
I didn't catch the specifics of that request, Julie. Or you said stakeholder lists or stakeholder engagement concepts or or comments on the policies?
Well, kind of all of the above. So basically, if some if anyone that's involved in this conversation right now or hasn't been able to be on this call, but we know they have some input, I would like to have some time to and and basically have you guys be saying, hey, let's hear from you, not only just from today's meeting, but in an email form, you know, something that can get tracked, that you can then go back and look at. That's basically anyone's ideas, their input, their thoughts on how to better accomplish this outreach. And in that, there might be some suggestions of, you know, I think these stakeholders are important. Or I have an idea about how to reach out to the workers up at Skamania Lodge and actually talking to the person that heads up sending the checks out. You know, I know that person. Or have you ever thought of putting in some kind of flyer and all the checks that they mail out that has, you know, how to contact, that this is something that we're talking about? I I just think that so I had heard a couple of people say creative outreach. What does that look like? And if you're open to it, I think we all need to like have that rumble around in our heads and then be able to say, hey, here's an idea, here's an idea, here's an idea. I think we've got a lot of really smart people with a lot of connections in the community with really great ideas. And so it could be any and all of the above, whether it's the stakeholders, whether it's working with affordable housing in a different way, whether it's having a specific idea of how to deal with getting design input from the community, all of those things. So I guess I'm saying whatever anybody's feedback is, to coalesce it into what their ideas, their thoughts, and maybe even their connections that they have and be able to give that to you. So it it sounds like you're very much open to getting that feedback right now. But I think we might need just a little bit of time to put that together to give it back to you.
Thank you, Julie. Ben, did you have any more questions for Julie?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Any answer?
Mary, you still have an opportunity there.
Mary, any anything else to add to our discussion?
Yes, just a couple of things. First, Mary Rapar, first, I don't, you know, we can talk about this issue and have the public participation. But I think what you're going to find from what I've been hearing in the community, since I still am involved in a lot in Stevenson, is that most of your most of your residents don't want more density. They don't want more people in town. They don't want more cars in town. Most of this pressure is coming from either developers or people with a lot of money who have still come into our community where you can still buy some houses for less than half a million dollars, not for long, I'm assuming, and, you know, invest in the community and not just to live here, but invest in it by commodifying housing. So I think you until you decommodify housing, as I've stated in my memo to you, this is the affordable housing isn't going to go anywhere. You're going to have to have discussions about rent control. You're going to have to have discussions about developments, having housing, affordable housing in the sense of Section 8 HUD housing, put into them as they are developed, like Rick May says, to integrate people into the community and not to separate low income or affordable housing income people, which is a disparaging thing sometimes, and people look down on subsidized housing to integrate them into your greater community. You might even have to look at Proposition 13-like tax policy and maybe taxing second, third, fourth, and fifth homes and tent homes and tent parcels at a higher tax in order to have money to invest in work housing. You know, if you don't have workers up at the lodge, there's not going to be a lot. There's a more impact from housing than just that. You already see it in Hood River and and White Salmon and Bingen. People can't afford to live in their communities to do the work that is needed to keep those communities going. So we can discuss this problem over and over again. But until you can figure out a way to decommodify housing, this discussion isn't going anywhere because nothing will be done. We have to think outside the box. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Anyone else, Ben, before we move on?
Yep, one just popped up, and I may have inadvertently put a hand down on 3607711726. If so, please raise your hand again.
Looks like Kelly McKee has her hand up. Is that?
Yes, may I chime in?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hello, Kelly O'Malley-McKee here with the Stevenson Downtown Association. And I just wanted to chime in to let folks know that I've been hearing a lot of feedback from all of our downtown restaurants the very difficult time that they're having rehiring as as things are opening up and and pointing back to the affordable housing thing. So for their workers. So I just wanted to make just chime in briefly. It's not just the lodge. It's all of our downtown restaurants that are experiencing this shortage. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, Ben, how are we doing?
Another hand locally.
Okay.
Rick.
I'll make the shorts since I was longer before. One of the things is, you know, we the whole Stevenson's is an enterprise zone. And if you're not familiar with the enterprise zone, basically, you can pull investments in together into this. And let's say, let's say an investor comes in and puts a half a million dollars into, let's say, a big giant project to to make affordable housing on it. And let's say they hold on to it for 10 years or longer. Any of the capital gains that you would normally have if you sell that at that particular period of time, those are forgiven. So it's a huge tax rate for an investor. So, you know, the thing is, is to to just go and say, how would you bring these components together? You have a lodge up there that can't that can't keep good people. You have the the restaurants in downtown that can't they can't keep. How do you bring all these people together? How do you take a look at this enterprise zone? And how do you put this together and go, okay, we can't solve everything right immediately? I mean, I saw the city council, and they want to have 20 affordable housing units coming up here within the next few years. And what came up to me is that it's great to say, but you really have to get your hands dirty and dig in and go, how do you economically create this? How do you create housing that that's affordable for these people that are working up with the lodge? What does that look like? What are the size? How can you do it? Where can you put it at? How can you get investors to come in and invest the money? How do you get the lodge to come in and 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 put some money where their mouth is and fit all these people together to be able to create that? And it isn't going to be easy, but that that can succeed. And that's, I think, that's that's what the question is right now, is that how do you bring all these component parts together to be able to solve this particular problem? I think it is solvable, but, you know, it is something that's going to take the whole community. Maybe we have an opportunity right now because we have a lot of the community that's kind of woken up. And, you know, they're going to understand the the need to have affordable housing. I mean, you know, and if we can get the community behind this, and then we can put these component parts together, maybe we can at least begin to solve some of this problem.
Great. Thanks, Rick. Much appreciated. All right.
Thank you. One one more here locally.
Oh, okay, yes.
Do you want me to go, Valerie?
Yeah, who is it? I'm sorry.
Pat Rice.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Pat.
One thing I'd like to just look at in all this is sometimes we miss the low hanging fruit. And that is, I think, two comments. One is, let's look at Zone 1 in this and think, what can we do better with the existing zones we have? I mean, a real critical look at that because, I mean, as somebody who has several pieces of property that I could develop right now in some, in fact, I am working on, I see issues with the city that would make it a lot easier, that if things were streamlined, it'd be a lot easier and save money and everything else. So if you we want, and I know that Ben and everybody else has probably done a really good job of the inventory out there that's existing. And I know Rick May has commented on some of this, as far as how much inventory is there just with the existing zones. But if we can, we can't just say, hey, let's look at Zone 2 and 3, and how can we change the zoning? But how can we read? What if we didn't do anything? What can we do better with what we have now? And there's probably a lot of low hanging fruit. And even a city council member I was talking to recently was talking about how, well, different things that could be streamlined just to make things easier for people like me that have excess money to to build it. Maybe you want to be a do-gooder and can build a small 750-foot home for somebody. And that and and then on the community engagement. So that's my comment on that. Let's take a hard look at that. And I know that's hard because when we do that, we're saying, well, maybe we're doing something wrong and we're and the staff get defensive. But you know what? Maybe we're all doing something that we could be doing better. And maybe that's just the hard reality of it, is we all have to be self-critical and look at ourselves in the mirror. And the other thing is on community involvement, is there's there's this term that we've all heard buzzword, active listening. And having worked with psychiatric patients for a while, that term is really misused, and most people don't know how to do it. And if you really do active listening in the community, it's, I would say, we probably haven't had active listening through the process so far. A lot of work, but it really wasn't active listening, I don't think. Because and that's proof by where we're at. Now, active listening means that you don't have a predetermined idea, and you actually go to someone and you say to them, what do you think? And then you're you're quiet for five or 10 minutes and you just listen. And then you ask more questions. And it's really hard, but can you do that at a community level? Well, my wife and I, as community troublemakers and activists for the last 30 years, have done that. And we typically, at our meetings, had large output, had large audiences every time. So it can be done. So I just, I just think the hard part is looking at yourself in the mirror and saying, you know, what we're doing now isn't working. But maybe that is the reality. Maybe what we're doing now is not working. And I and you could say, well, that's really easy for you to say, Pat, for everybody else to be hard on themselves. No, you know who the biggest screwup in life is? Me. I'm just saying, we all need to think, how can we do better? So let's just say I'm the biggest effective person here, and you pay me $100,000, you do my job. I have to look at myself and say, I could do better. I'm doing something wrong because we haven't, we're not getting input from people. And I'm saying that we all need to do that. And I'll tell you one way to get people to your meetings, and that's to put out a one-sentence flyer with a lot of white space and say, we are going to do something that affects your property. It could be good or bad if we screw it up. Do you want to come to a meeting to learn about it? Because this could affect your property values. When we got people to our meetings, those are the type of one headlines we would put on issues. And so that's, and we always got people there. Plenty of white space, big headlines, this affects you. If you don't come, you're not going to find out about the crime that was in your neighborhood last week. The police officers are going to be there. Same thing with traffic issues. So it's how you do the headlines. It's how you frame it. And if you do it right, you will have a crowd there every time. You don't have a crowd, you're doing it wrong, and you need to look at yourself in the mirror and not blame the public. So thank you for listening.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate your comments, although I would tell you, I don't want Ben to be the Howard Stern of the planning department. I appreciate your comments. Oh, come on, no one's talking funny. Come on. All right, Ben. All right, Ben, anyone else?
Bill, again.
Just a follow up on Julie's comment. It sounded to me like an opportunity for a small task force of creative people to come together and put something together that kind of gelled all of the suggestions she was making. I don't know, just thinking of some way, an additional way to get that information. I'm feeling like things are kind of fragmented. We're getting a lot of input from a lot of people, but I'm not sure how that actually rolls out into anything. The ideas just kind of drift off and they get repeated. But I don't know if you're hearing them. I don't know if those get translated into anything. It's a bit unsettling, I guess.
Give me a chance, Bill.
Oh, well, I wasn't looking at you, actually, no. I think that's one of the problems. Everybody's looking at you. And as Pat says, maybe we ought to be looking at ourselves. But anyway, I was thinking that a group of interested people might be able to do something with that.
Ben, do you want to address that? Because I know you and Jeff, you know, have taken kind of point on this whole process. So if you don't mind speaking to that.
Either way, I was just going to summarize what I heard to see if that changed the topic.
Okay.
So there's, there's been a range of suggestions for what to do with the next step here. And so that range has gone from rely on experts and their opinions as the engagement to completely rethink things at a systemic level. We've also had the idea to put things on pause for even longer, including establishing the public involvement or engagement expectations and crowdsourced ideas for outreach and stakeholder lists. And what's important to the community or what's important to those stakeholders? We've had people volunteer to door knock and hand out flyers. We've had suggestions on the content of the flyers. And none of those things that we've heard point to, well, some of them point to a public workshop, but largely that's not being seen as supported. Is that what everyone else heard or?
I'd say those are all additive sort of.
Yeah.
I think we have a number of elements that have been laid out. And I think as Phil said, I think we need to start bringing those things together. I thought we, we had a pretty good discussion and I think some support over how do you reach out? Do we do a community open house? But there's a lot of work that goes into that community open house. And we talked about that, you know, you know, how do you get people to come? You know, who do you, who do you pursue out there? How do you, how do you convince these folks that it's worthwhile them spending their time in a community workshop by setting some, you know, some clear expectations and materials for them that, so they know why they're coming? And then how do you organize that workshop to ensure that it provides a safe and comfortable and inviting forum for people to come and feel like they can express their opinions? You know, if you put 300 people in a room and you only have one speaker at a time, you know, most people don't engage in that kind of situation. So how do you structure something so you really allow folks to provide that, you know, that input? I think one of the things too that we talk about is, is how broad some of these issues are. You know, I appreciate Rick's comments. There's stuff, you know, if we're talking about affordable housing, that's not an issue that this planning commission is going to resolve. I mean, it's, we're part of it. But it's a much bigger topic, you know? And in our prior meetings, I've said, gosh, we ought to be looking at realtors and existing landlords and financial institutions and and others in terms of trying to define just exactly what our needs are out there and how to go best filling this. That sort of suggests to me that we need to be thinking about how the city, how we play this with the city council. Because it also, it's not just affordable housing, it's, it's a livable community. What are we doing for transportation and recreation? What about the infrastructure and the, and the city services that we provide? And, you know, what do people want to see? You know, a lot of people don't want anything to change, but I think one thing that I've seen in my now close to 70 years in this community is it's going to change. And I think unless we're thinking about what kind of a community we want to live in, that change is going to happen and we're going to simply be observers. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see an initiative here where we do draw upon those folks that have volunteered to help us sit down and think through how we, how we can start to bring the public into this process. I'd love to see a couple of city council members sit in with us or run anyway, you know, so we have some linkage there. And really talk about a mechanism that we can put in place that works, that works with the capacity that we have or identifies what capacity we need. Because it's, it's hard work. And, you know, I know Ben, I know your plate's pretty full. How do you do something like this? It pays a dividend, but it requires a concerted effort out there.
I agree. Ben, I just want to ask, where are we at with updating the comprehensive plan? Is that in the horizon at all? Is that a half a decade or more out? Or where are we at with bigger approach to these, some of these issues?
We're not required to update it on any schedule. And so the the only answer I can give you is that we have a two, two-year cycle where you review all comprehensive plan amendment requests within those two years. And that's an application process that the public or the planning commission or staff submits. The last one that came, or the only one that's ever come in has been the one that staff submitted for the capital improvement planning and put all that on hold with cover. So the staff initiated updates. We're okay just letting that pass until the next cycle. Issues initiated by the public haven't been there in the past and we would review them on that, that cycle if they come in now. Many other communities in the state have, I think it's, you know, if it's a 10 year or eight year, it's either an eight or a 10 year cycle where they have to do some, some deeper look. We're not on that requirement cycle. So up to us, up to the city council.
Good. I recall those data on the last comprehensive plan.
It was 2013.
2013?
Eight years, yeah.
What was the one prior to that, Ben?
It was 1983.
Okay. Holy cow. Okay, Davey had a comment.
Yeah, I've, I've been pulling over the copy of, my copy of the plan. And it is eight years old, so I would think 10 years would be like a pretty good, you know, time to reexamine it. So that may be something we want to put on our schedule.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that same, you know, concern. I think freshening it up and getting some idea of where we want to go as a community is important. To speak to Jeff's comment, I mean, not having a plan is not a viable plan. So we've got to come up with something that, you know, gives us a direction to go. And I think that's what the comprehensive plan does. This gives us a general concept of where we want to go. It doesn't have the details and stuff like that. That's something that, that is more flexible. But I think, you know, in the big frame of things, we need to look at, you know, where do we want to be in 10 years? Where do we want to be in 20 years? And that's, you know, of course, all is all going to change. It's like whoever expected COVID to have the effect that it did. So it's, it's not that we need a rigid, you know, guideline. It's just that there needs to be a kind of a community consensus on what do we feel is constructive growth and what, you know, what do we want to try to avoid? That's, that's my two cents.
Thanks, August. So Ben, do you, I mean, I felt like I heard we do want to have the public, you know, open house. But I did hear also that we had some folks that wanted to volunteer to help formulate the plan for that open house as well as the outreach. Is that, is that something where we could possibly create like a small?
Lost your audio.
Here we go. What would be the best way to facilitate something like that? And could we do that?
We can do that. And as far as the best way, I don't have any specific solutions, but we can get a list of people together to start talking about that. We've got another hand up on screen too, before I forget about it.
Okay, who's that?
Root, there you go.
Hello, this is Julie May. Sorry, it takes a little while to get it unmuted while I listen to the little automated person tell me what to do. So I just wanted to say, I guess, an answer to Ben, your question earlier of, well, first of all, thank you for reflecting back what you were hearing and then having a question and then opening it up to everybody else. Because I, what I would like to say is that I don't think that people are saying, no, we don't want an open house. I think a lot of these answers are yes and, yes and, yes and. So I think that doing a multi-fingered approach to this, of which a big one is community input and public input is going to be critical at this point. I think definitely looking at, you know, what has already been utilized of getting the, these different reports back that are looking at these people that are kind of, you know, the experts, as you pointed out, and then the stakeholders. I really think that it's a multi-faceted pronged piece here. And the community piece appears to be the one that is late coming into the conversation, unfortunately. But I think you do have people that are making really good suggestions. I've heard a lot of really great stuff, even just tonight. And so I, I think, yeah, if there is a small group of people that would like to just get maybe a little bit more involved, but basically just coalesce the ideas of how do we get creative here? And really, the answer to your question is yes and, yes and. So as much as we can do, I think is going to be the best way to have everyone feel like they've been a part of this. And I think it's awesome that you've got this many people that are like, hey, I, I have this idea or I have this concern or I have this problem or there is this problem out in the community. Let's figure out how to create a solution for it. So I just hope that we keep on having this conversation and lots and lots of public input. So yeah, the open house might be a fabulous thing and all of these other things involved as well.
Thank you, Julie. And I have to tell you, I was counting up the attendees, you know, on, on our Zoom call and, you know, you have the panelists and folks sitting there in City Hall. And, you know, I've been doing the planning commission for a long time and we're lucky to get one person to show up. So I'm very happy that we have this many people engaging and would just love to see more. So thank you for your comments. All right, Ben, I think we're about done. Do you feel like you have what you need to move forward? It sounds like you'll likely reach out to some folks that you know are interested in being part of helping with the process for the outreach. Is that correct?
Rick May wants to input more.
Okay, one more comment, Rick, and we'll move on.
Well, Rick May, okay, so, you know, I believe in specific measurable results. There's people out here that are willing to kind of get together into a group. And I'm willing to try to chase down and get a council member to be part and parcel of it. You know, Ben's a pretty busy guy and, you know, and to have him have to be responsible for all this, you know, maybe easier to try to create something with, you know, and have, maybe have Jeff or Mike be a part of it and come together and start banging these ideas together and have a council member and have somebody from the planning here. And we work outside and we just bang these ideas around and then come and present these ideas. And that way, you know, we don't, we don't keep, and I think it's, it's got to be driving or drive me crazy to have all this input coming in there and just want it just to coalesce into a way forward. And maybe by having a group together, we can come to figure out a way forward that's going to, that's going to keep everybody happy and then actually solve the problem. Maybe create some affordable housing.
And I want to, before we move on, I want to add to that, Ben, that I guess what, I mean, I feel like we do want to have an open house at one point, but, but part of that too, if you are to create some type of subcommittee, it's, a lot of folks had ideas of even how we reach out and engage. And I think that, that's for me, the starting piece of how we do that in the way that we get a diverse group of people to engage with us is the most important thing. So I'm not, again, I'm not sure how we want to do that if you want to, sorry, my dogs are, my dogs are barking. How we start out with it, Ben? Do you want to add any comments before we move on?
I guess I don't have a clear expectation of specific measurable results. So.
I don't.
I mean, with.
Go ahead.
You know, I think, I think, Ben, we've got, you know, these, these volunteers, let's put it that way, those live bodies that want to participate in this process. I think we bring them together and we, we start laying out just exactly what it is we want to accomplish in an open house and start looking at how that's organized and who needs to be there and, and how do we do that outreach? And we come back with a specific report to the planning commission. Yeah, I would hope we could, we could do something certainly before the next planning commission meeting. So we come back with the framework, maybe not all those questions, you know, answered, maybe not all those details filled out, but a pretty clear direction in terms of of what we think is a workable path forward. And I think also, again, in looking at it, I mean, one open house, yes, and we, we need to gather that input, but also looking at, I think, it, that sort of overall process. Because when you take that input, you really are saying, I have an obligation to come back to those folks that work with me and say, this is how we use your input, this is what we heard, which is your sort of a follow-up. And look, I, perhaps how we build that again into a, into a broader sort of ongoing conversation with the community. And we've heard some other ideas in terms of the neighborhood approach or whatever. But certainly a report. Bring those folks together, gather those ideas, start to synthesize them into something that's workable. Because I think there's a lot of common elements that we heard here. I didn't hear anything that was conflicting various levels of detail, but I think we've put together something.
And this is Mike. And I think all those are excellent ideas, yeah. What I would, I'm just, when I'm thinking about this topic and this process and this proposed fairly extensive outreach efforts or efforts to gather a greater conversation about the topic, I think that in, I think some of these topics should be discussed as part of a broader discussion in an update to the comprehensive plan. Because what we have before us, what has been before us for the last year and a half now or about that, has been increasing residential building capacity. And that was the goal of this exercise. And we came up with some plans that were then revised, reduced in scope, changed the notions of what could happen in the community as potential to increase residential building capacity. And I think having an open house, having a prelude to an open house, getting members of the getting members of the public involved with helping to frame that open house will be very valuable. And I certainly value the input and I want this, have additional public input into this, but when we started thinking about what should the community look like, we're really looking at a longer range, 10 years down the line, 20 years down the line, not this fairly limited topic that was before us of increasing residential building capacity. My opinion is that if we did the changes that we proposed, we would maybe only see a handful of residential housing units added, not the 120 or whatever. But so when I think about this topic, I'd like to see it be have some end goal to where we would be able to come back as a planning commission this summer or in the fall to come with up with some solid recommendations as opposed to getting bogged down for a year in this process of what should be perhaps a more comprehensive plan update. And maybe a 10-year or a 15-year cycle on a comprehensive plan review would be good, even if it isn't down to a complete new comprehensive plan, but maybe some potential that Stevenson every 15 years or 10 years begins to look at if a comprehensive plan update is merited or something a bit more than what's been done in the past. So I think.
Maybe that is that, that long-term.
Yeah, and that might be some of what we're hearing here tonight and some of the concerns would be better addressed with a a larger look at the city at large or city as a whole.
But yeah, we could start by putting a process in place now. And building, and building that level of trust and communications with folks, address some of these, these smaller issues. If folks feeling comfortable to go, and that's a process that builds ultimately to updating the comprehensive plan. So I mean, yeah.
And this process might provide a good template.
We don't want to start all over again with a, with a public process when you want to do your comprehensive plan update. What can we do to have an ongoing dialogue with the community now?
And some of the tools that are developed for this might inform the ability to do the comprehensive plan more effectively.
That certainly fits into what I've been feeling about a more permanent process that's reliable. This, this is a, what's the problem today? Let's run out and gather a bunch of input and fix it. It's just doesn't work very well. And if we had something in place that the council and the commission and staff can rely on, that would work for brush fires as well as comprehensive plan, whatever it is. But it needs to be, you can't crank it up every time you have a brush fire. It just, it's just too costly to do that. It takes too much Ben's time, it takes too much of your time. And the fallout is, is disgruntled people and not very good decisions sometimes. So I, I think there's some power in this if we can figure out how to do it.
In your name, sir.
If you can figure it.
Your name.
I don't have my.
Anonymous.
Oh, we can still find you. All right, Ben, I think we should wrap this discussion up and move on. How would you like people to get in touch with you if they'd like to be part of kind of this subcommittee that's going to get started to work on this?
Well, there was one suggestion that I'm not even involved in that, so like, you know, that, that issue to be settled to.
Ben, I think it's more an issue of what, what's your capacity to participate in this? It's not that, I don't think we do, I think we'd love to have you engaged in that, let's put it that way.
Jeff, if you could commit to scheduling and, and that sort of coordination, I'm assuming you'd be part of that and I can show up and support that in person and I'll get emails.
Great, thank you, Jeff, again for spearheading this, it's much appreciated for doing all the heavy lifting.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, um, Ben, are we, are you feeling comfortable, we can go ahead and move on?
I, I think so. The other thing that Mike brought up about how much of this is the specific changes that we were talking about for residential building? It might be worth a check-in just to say, do we want to continue pursuing anything here? Or call this the end of the road for this discussion? It'd be a shame to, now that we have activated people in it, but if the, if the fundamentals of the comprehensive plan in its direction are wrong and if the community doesn't have the trust, it, it doesn't give you all the consent to make decisions or recommendations on things and, and the, the council to make decisions on them, maybe we just full stop on this totally.
Well, I don't know that you go to full stop. I don't, I don't want this to, to, to stop what is pretty straightforward, routine business that we need to do. You know, some, maybe we, we screen those specific, you know, topics we, we think should proceed and those, maybe we want to bounce to, you know, to this broader discussion.
Maybe the process could involve identifying some of the things that are germane to this residential building best. I think you have a nice little checklist on the back and other topics, which then we say, well, let's take those items of concern and let's put those in the pool for the comprehensive plan update discussions that we'll have in the future. This, then be able to pare it out. What we are, is currently business and then what would be future business would say, well, let's dial it in. I think that's a good idea, Jeff, is just an, an event to, to limit the discussion to this topic already in terms of this immediate process.
I'd like to make one quick comment if I may, Rick May. You know, one of the things to think about is, is that on your R1 zone, you're going to talk about changing, you know, going forward with change, which you have, you have a lot of pushback in the community for that. And there'd be, you know, maybe you can get it through by doing some point tuning. But also realize that right now you are allowed in R1 zone, you're allowed to have a single-family building and you're allowed to have a basically a mother-in-law quarter or whatever you want to call it. So for a 6,000 square foot lot, which means basically you can have one unit for every 3,000 square feet. You know, and in a, so basically one unit for every 3,000, which is what you get in an R2 zone. So you really are not creating very much increased density by doing this to begin with. And I'm going back again to this recommendation that was made in the 2020 study. This is, do you allow an attachment, a detach? What that does is that, that in your R1 zone, that's 50% increase in the amount of housing you can do on, on a, in one 6,000 square foot lot. So it kind of solves your problem, in fact, it oversolves your problem. You'll have more housing that will become available and you don't, and you may not have that big pushback. I'm just giving you some ideas about how you can create that high density and have, and people, and you basically tell people, well, you have the freedom either to do this or not. This will create more affordable housing in the community by doing something like this and you'll be able to create income for maybe your senior years by having this, this detached mother-in-law quarters to be able to do it. So it's something that may have significantly less pushback and actually create a higher density just by doing one simple thing.
Thanks, Rick. And I think we're ready to move on unless you have any other questions on process before we do that.
To summarize, I'll work with Jeff to get a contact list together for potential, well, for subcommittee. And then I'll participate in those meetings and we'll bring back a report to you next month.
And then it would be a goal to have a month after that, like in that month after that, that also.
Well, thank you so much for taking time to lie, appreciate it.
Yeah, and your names are on our list. Then we know where you live.
Okay, so on to staffing commission reports.
I'll, I'll talk about the ones here. We do have interviews scheduled for interns this summer to help us out with better understand parking. And by the next meeting, we should have selected somebody and if they agree to join us, they'll start shortly after that, determine shortly after that. So that's exciting. Public tree preservation plan is moving forward. This is the DNR funded grants where we're looking at city trees and trying to cover as many of our partners' trees at the library and the school as possible. It's repeats of an inventory that was done in 1986. And the goal is to develop a management plan so that the city staff knows how to deal with management issues associated with trees, things like heaving the sidewalks, selecting the right species so less heave, trimming them. We hope to get some broad level guidance on whether to have any corridors that have tree canopy over the, the whole street, so. That project is being led by the public works department and that's coming along, but we'll, we'll know more about when there would be a kickoff meeting for that, for some of the public involvement piece. And then developing the management plan will follow after the inventory or they'll go out and measure the trees and, and state whether there's any observable disease, high-value trees on public property. So that's moving forward. Columbia Relignment Project, we applied for a integrated planning grant from the Department of Ecology to continue looking at that and we received that, so that project will continue moving forward, being studied more on that. I forget the specific deliverables, the, I think it was just more concept level, so we'll be looking more thoroughly at whether there's contamination there and what to do with contamination. If there is some on the site that could involve remediation by removing current contaminants from the soils and putting in fresh soil. You can also remediate by capping it with, say, an asphalt area so that more groundwater doesn't get in that area to, to take it to other areas. We'll be costing some of those out at, at a very basic level to try to have most of the fields filled out in a pro forma that we can then hand to potential developers on either side of that to say, look, we've done the heavy lifting, this is an area that can be put back into productive use. Can you make that happen or do you want to make that happen? So it is something that, that's being proactive. We also talked in that about the parking needs of whatever the feasible concept would be and how to work with that with these other parking things that we're talking about. So joint-use city lots, fee and loom of parking issues. So they'll be parking the project out, seeing how much parking it would, would ideally generate or how much traffic it would generate in parking it would need. So that's exciting, that's another project that will kick off sometime in the third quarter of the year.
Perfect.
Couple months, so. Lots going on, lots going on, it's going to be a busy summer. Spring has been a busy winter.
It's just busy.
It's busy, yeah, but.
Summer's coming, so. Alrighty, well, thank you, anything else, Ben, before we adjourn?
Unless there's anything from you all.
I'm good.
Michigan, where I went to grad school, the comprehensive plans are up to every 20 years scheduled and sometimes they extend them up to 25. I'm not saying that's appropriate here, but some communities, it's like every other decade, comprehensive line update.
And Ben, I, I just want to, with my appreciation for all the outreach that you did, because, you know, we were really trying to figure out, what do you do in COVID?
Yeah.
In order to get, but in, you know, what we're getting, this type of input we're getting back is, is really, really direct feedback.
Maybe more effective than not. So Ben, good job. Kudos, you really did get the public to participate a lot.
I know how much, how much work that is too, I, I really appreciate it.
As far as engagement is concerned, free beer works every time.
Pizza nights at the Fairgrounds?
On that note, we're adjourning, all right. Bye-bye.
Yeah, Jeff, good point. It was, there was a lot of.
Hey, Ben?
Yeah.
Hey, no, I'm just curious, it sounded like tonight through the discussion, do you want to see any change in the timing of the minutes?
No, that's all I mean, you're good.
You sure? Okay.
Yeah.
This month was late. What's the best way to get the recording?
Well, the last meeting, we didn't have a recording. For, anyway, technical difficulties. We will, for this one, and I think we're figuring that out, we're moving, we're changing the city website that should be more in line with everything else we're doing and so I'm not fully up to speed on that, but I'll be able to get it to you more easily now too, for other meetings. When I was at home, I had to transfer it to here to then, anyway.
Yeah, it's complicated.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, it does help speed things up. Okay, thank you.